Well, good evening. Welcome. I appreciate everybody being here. My name is John Dreisner. I'm a physician and I'm the Commissioner of Health in Tennessee. With me today are Mr. Jeff Ackerman, to my right, our Director of Health Planning, and Jeff will also serve as the Hearing Officer for this evening. And to my left is Ms. Jane Young, who is General Counsel for the Department of Health. So we are here today to give people in Tennessee an opportunity to weigh in on the future of health and health care in our state. There's a proposed merger of systems in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia, which is precedent-setting. It's a big decision. And it's not just a decision for the region, it's a decision for our whole state. It is the department's responsibility by law to ensure that proposal would meet a standard of clear and convincing evidence to provide a public health benefit to the citizens of the region and all of Tennessee. The Copa process is important to the citizens of Tennessee and this region, and the department is working diligently to fulfill its responsibilities in a timely manner and to be transparent and responsive in the process. These hearings are part of an important, ongoing conversation with key stakeholders like you, so that there are a number of ways for people to provide input. This is our sixth public hearing. We've also provided the ability for people to provide comments to us online, and that is ongoing, through the Department of Health's website. You can reach that by searching TennesseeHealth.gov. The deadline for a decision on the Certificate of Public Advantage is now September 19th, 2017. So with that, I want to thank you again for being here. We have a number of people that have signed up for comments. If you wish to comment, please do sign in. And I'm going to turn the microphone over now to Jeff Ackerman as Hearing Officer. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dreisner. And we will go ahead and get started. We are giving each of you three minutes, which is what we've done in all of our other public hearings. And I've got some nice little sheets here to help keep us all on track. And so just in order of who has signed up first, Urs Stieger.
My name is Urs.
When the speakers come to the podium, will you have them spell your name?
Spell our name. Yes, please spell your name for the court reporter. Thank you.
First name is U R S. Last name is spelled G S T E I G E R. I am a resident of Johnson City. I have been following this merger talks since their inception. And following this, I was intrigued to hear the following on WCYB television on June 22nd. This is from Standard &amp; Poor's. And this is their take on Wellmont. Said, "Wellmont said that it's making significant revenue gains. It described achievement in changing insurance classification of patients. The change involves patients staying briefly in a hospital, now classified as observation, rather than inpatient." Wellmont added, "This generates significantly more revenue from patients." Standard &amp; Poor's apparently likes that. Needless to say, I'm in opposition of this merger. I agree with the FTC that this merger is likely to stifle competition, and based on what Wellmont has said, obviously their primary goal here is financial and has nothing to do with patient care. I think this body needs to basically come out against this merger, not approve this Copa. One thing I will predict, however, is that if this merger goes through, the two CEOs who are already obscenely paid will likely generate even more revenue for themselves since they will be running a larger system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Leibnuth.
Good evening. My name is Bob Leibnuth, L E I B E N L U F T. And I'm here on behalf of AmeriGroup Tennessee. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. As you may know, AmeriGroup is a health plan offering Medicare Advantage and managed Medicaid under Ten Care. It has over 400,000 members in Tennessee, many of whom are located in northeast Tennessee. Accordingly, it has a very strong interest in the outcome of the Copa application process. AmeriGroup appreciates the considerable time and effort that the department and its consultants have spent reviewing the applications. While it's been a long, demanding process, this very rigor is exactly what is needed to make this critical decision. Under the Tennessee Copa statute, the applicants have the burden of demonstrating that the advantages of a Copa outweigh its disadvantages. And they must do this on a clear and convincing basis, which is a very demanding standard. Under the law, there must not be any serious doubt about the conclusion the department reaches. Despite the lengthy review process and the materials that the health systems have submitted, both initially and in their subsequent applications, they have not met this tough burden. Their application should be denied. Let me just briefly mention several reasons why. First, the disadvantages of the Copa due to the loss in competition is immense. We rely on competition in healthcare for many things. One goal is to guard against monopoly prices, but also competition assures that patients will have access to care at convenient locations, they'll have high-quality care, and they'll have good patient experiences. These are things that are hard to regulate. Where there's competition, patients and health plans have alternatives to go to, and that possibility ensures that providers will be responsive to their customers. If approved, the Copa will essentially eliminate any alternative in 13 counties in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. The merged health system will be a monopoly and the only choice for people in this region. Second, many of the claimed benefits are unsubstantiated, and this is despite the supplemental applications. For some of the claimed benefits, the Copa application provides only vague descriptions. For others, the goals the health systems have set for themselves are little more than what they already are achieving now without a merger. Third, the health systems have other alternatives to this merger. Neither health system is failing, as the previous speaker just mentioned, as shown by their recent financials. Many initiatives that involve training, public health, research, and efforts to reduce input costs raise no antitrust concerns, and there's no need for an antitrust immunity. Other initiatives, such as shared clinical service lines, also can be done in ways that can pass antitrust scrutiny and will not result in a total loss of competition. Fourth, finally, the party's commitments are insufficient, and there's significant risk they may not be met. For example, one of the key commitments of the rate cap could result in higher healthcare spending and fails to protect consumers adequately. And overall, I want to emphasize this, the party's commitments require them to do three things simultaneously. They would like to make major new investments in new services and programs, they won't raise prices, and they won't reduce services or employment. And it's really hard to square those three things. And while they sound good in the abstract, we're very concerned that as a practical matter, they can't be met, and then what? Potential remedies and unwinding would be very difficult, not impossible.
Thank you, Mr. Leibnuth.
In conclusion, we urge you to deny the Copa application.
If you have a written statement, please feel free to give it to us.
We do, and we've submitted three others, as you know, so we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. David Linville.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Ackerman, Ms. Young. My name is David Linville, L I N V I L L E. And I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of East Tennessee State University as the Associate Vice President for Health Affairs. It's a privilege to be with you, and I thank you for this opportunity. The university enthusiastically supports Mountain States Health Alliance and Wellmont Health System in their application for a Certificate of Public Advantage. For over 60 years, we at ETSU have worked closely with these two local health systems. Our success as an academic health science center depends on the continued growth and development of the university's collaborations in this community and in the region. The cooperative agreement submitted by our partners provides a vision for the continued improvement in the quality of healthcare services, access to care, and the healthy outcomes that we strive for in our community. We at the university are vested in this local commitment to improving the lives in our region. Individually, Wellmont and Mountain States are limited in the investments they can make to our programs on an individual basis. One example is the university's medical residency training programs and expensive commitment by our partners. Even with the federal government providing assistance to fund a certain number of residency slots at hospitals, we have relied on Mountain States and Wellmont to fund additional slots over and above what Medicare will reimburse. These training positions are critical in both terms of healthcare delivery and workforce development for the region. In recent years, our partners have been forced to cut a number of residency slots they can fund. If no action is taken, we can see further cuts to these slots. These cuts will seriously impair our ability to provide essential medical training programs for a reason, and this is but one example. With the Certificate of Public Advantage, synergies afford opportunities to develop and grow academic and research opportunities, support and expand postgraduate healthcare training, strengthen the pipeline and preparation of nurses and allied health professionals, and to create new specialty fellowship opportunities. As a proud alumnus of the Quillan College of Medicine, I am privileged to live here in this region, working with our partners at Mountain States and Wellmont, and making a difference in our community. On behalf of ETSU, thank you for the opportunity to provide these supportive comments for the cooperative agreement submitted by our partners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Barker.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity. My name is Nancy Barker, B A R K E R. I'm the Executive Director of the Rogersville Hawkins County Chamber of Commerce, and we're pleased to have the Hawkins County Memorial Hospital as a key healthcare organization in our community. Our high caliber healthcare is an important component in the quality of life of our region and plays a key role in our recruiting and retention efforts. The proposed merger of Wellmont Health Systems and Mountain State Health Alliance represents an opportunity to significantly improve the health and well-being of our region with the investment of $450 million in beneficial commitments. These will be achieved through efficiencies resulting from the two organizations coming together. These commitments are comprehensive and will allow our region to make more of an impact in the area of substance abuse and mental health. We will also be able to reserve and expand rural services and access points, which is very important in Hawkins County and Hancock County. The two health systems will be able to help our region live well by investing in programs that will decrease premature mortality from diabetes, cardiovascular disease, and multiple forms of cancer. And these are prominent health issues in our region, and we welcome the health system's attention to these. Through the proposed merger, we will maintain local governance of our healthcare. This ensures the efficiencies that we were able to achieve will be reinvested into our region and for the benefit of those who live and work there, and will also preserve local jobs. With approval of the application for the Certificate of the Public Advantage and active supervision from the state, Wellmont and Mountain State will be able to transform healthcare in our region, and that's an exciting proposition for us in Hawkins County. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Kidd.
Good evening, Dr. Dreisner, Mr. Ackerman, and Ms. Young. My name is Teresa Kidd, K I D D, and I'm the President and CEO of Frontier Health, the region's largest provider of mental health, substance abuse, and intellectual and developmental disability services. We provide services in the eight counties of northeast Tennessee and in Lee, Scott, and Wise Counties and the city of Norton in southwest Virginia. Frontier Health has been very involved in the assessment process in both Tennessee and Virginia regarding the advantages versus disadvantages of the proposed merger. Over the past two years, the leadership of Frontier Health have been involved in stakeholder meetings, steering committees, and advisory committees. Through the Mental Health and Addiction Subcommittee process, other stakeholders and providers of behavioral health services throughout the Virginia service area were also involved in the analysis of gaps and how the proposed merger could assist in meeting those gaps and needs. In other words, there was an effort made by Mountain States Health Alliance and Wellmont Health Systems to seek out the opinions and expertise of those of us engaged in the behavioral health arena. Significant commitments to the community were made as part of the Copa application, and it was the job of the Mental Health Steering and Addiction Steering Committee to evaluate the strengths and gaps in our region and to take a focused look at what would be needed from a systems perspective to reduce the prevalence and consequences of substance abuse and mental health problems in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. Effective prevention efforts, early identification and intervention, and inadequate and full continuum of treatment services available for all regardless of their ability to pay, as well as integration and education within the community to decrease stigma and increase access to care, were proposed to be the hallmarks of excellence in a regional array of behavioral health services. Various significant financial commitments have been made in the Copa application over a 10-year period, including at least $75 million in population health improvements, $85 million to develop and grow academic research opportunities, support postgraduate education, and strengthen the preparation of nurses and allied health professionals, nearly $150 million to facilitate the regional exchange of health information among participating providers. All of these will help promote improvements in primary and specialty care, including behavioral health. But in addition, $140 million had been committed for the expansion of specialized mental health, addiction recovery, and substance abuse prevention and treatment services, as well as other healthcare needs. Developing an understanding of the difference between a Copa process and a traditional merger process has been a great learning experience for those of us who've been active in the community stakeholder meetings. The Copa process appears to be invested in continued collaboration with community providers. After being involved for nearly two years in the Copa process, Frontier Health believes the commitments made by the merger will yield far more advantages to our respective communities than disadvantages, and we support the proposed merger. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Gilman.
Hi, my name is Alexis Gilman, G I L M A N. Good evening, Dr. Dreisner, members of the department. I'm Alexis Gilman, Assistant Director of the Mergers Board Division at the Federal Trade Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. As always, my remarks are those of FTC staff. They do not necessarily represent the views of the commission or any individual commissioners, although the commission has authorized me to give these remarks tonight. As we have previously testified, local consumers benefit from close competition between the applicants, Mountain States, and Wellmont, in the form of lower prices, higher quality, and greater access to care. If allowed to merge, the combined hospital systems would have a dominant market share in inpatient services and significant market share in several outpatient and physician specialty service lines. The loss of that competition is likely to have significant negative effects on hospital prices, quality of care, and the availability of services. The applicants have submitted additional information, but still have not shown that the purported benefits of the merger will offset these harms. In particular, the applicants have recently submitted three reports to Department of Health. We carefully reviewed those reports in consultation with a leading independent healthcare expert. None of those reports provides additional evidence or analysis that changes our evaluation of the merger, and we remain concerned that the merge will cause significant harm to consumers in the region. Earlier today, FTC staff submitted a written public comment discussing our concerns with these three reports. Tonight, I will highlight a few of these concerns. Notably absent from the Compass Lexicon Economist Report is any empirical analysis of current competition between the parties or the harm likely to result from the merger. This report also fails to consider the benefits and efficiencies the applicants likely could achieve on their own or through other means. Therefore, it likely overstates the benefits of the proposed merger. The Compass report also fails to provide evidentiary support for many of its claims. And we believe it misstates some of the facts, including the claim that the applicant's incentives are best aligned with those of health plans. In fact, public evidence shows that health plans oppose the merger. Similarly, the applicant's other two reports do not account for the benefits of competition between the applicants and overstate the merger's incremental benefits. Additionally, we note the parties have not, at least publicly, offered any additional or improved commitments. Thus, the flaws and gaps in the applicant's commitments that we identified in our last public comment remain. Finally, I want to note that it will be difficult, if not impossible, to pry apart a merger involving so many hospitals once the applicants consolidate or eliminate service lines, facilities, and jobs. Therefore, antitrust enforcement not provide a good remedy if the Copa is approved, but the department later determines that the disadvantages outweigh the benefits. For these reasons, we respectfully submit that department and the Attorney General should not deny the Copa. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wesley Combs.
Hello, my name is Wesley Combs, W E S L E Y C O M B S. I'm here, I represent a company called One Partner, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to kind of address some of the comments we've had made on some review. So, One Partner is a healthcare technology company with its corporate offices located in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. One Partner HIE began with the goal to improve patient care quality by providing instant access to patient records through the Health Information Exchange. One Partner would like to provide factual clarification on misstatements found in the responses to questions dated April 22nd, 2016 concerning One Partner and its scope and capabilities. In Exhibit 19, on Page 2, One Partner is described as "an exclusively regional health information exchange available to providers located in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia." The HIE started with the goal to provide regional community record, but has since expanded its footprint nationally into six more states and since expanded its functionality for population health. The second correction is as to the amount of information One Partner is capable of managing. The misstatement is, "The information fields available in the One Partner HIE are limited to the following," after which 18 elements are listed. One Partner, in fact, collects up to 392 data elements that can describe a single healthcare event on a patient. This aggregation can easily add up to tens of thousands of data points for one patient's visit to a hospital or a doctor. The data collected can be used in risk identification, HCC, patient and physician attribution, transitions of care, along with patient stratification, just to name a few. These are all attributes of a solid population health management platform that are intended to supplement competent hospital information or doctor's EMR system, not to replace them. One Partner's unwavering commitment to the community focuses on improving healthcare through the collection and dissemination of the patient data. Currently, 15 One Partner employees actively work on the HIE and are dedicated to its continuous improvement. One Partner HIE services are EHR agnostic, so any client on any EHR with any affiliation can subscribe to our services and benefit. In closing, I know you all are faced with a difficult decision to make that could affect our region for generations. The decision will set a precedent for the rest of the state, so I do appreciate your accessibility and desire to seek public feedback. After all, this is approving a certificate only if the public gets the advantage. I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you these points tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Eldridge.
I'm Dan Eldridge, E L D R I D G E. I am the Washington County Mayor, and I'm here this afternoon to express my strong support for approval of the merger. I'm thankful to the boards of Mountain States and Wellmont for their commitment to this region that has led to an agreement to join forces. Their decision, based on large part on how to sustain and best provide for the healthcare needs of the families they serve, has resulted in an opportunity that will have far-reaching positive implications on this region. As we face the ongoing health challenges, their fiscal impact on our households, businesses, local governments, and our local economy, and the population health issues that we must overcome in this region, leaders in this region, like myself, need assurances. Assurances that the years of uncertainty is about to pass as a result of a positive outcome to this process. We need a commitment. A commitment to continued access and quality of care that can only be made by a board that lives here, works here, and is committed to bettering the future of this region. And we need a plan. A plan developed by a management team with the experience and understanding of our healthcare systems and the healthcare needs of our region, who have promised to not just maintain, but build on the capabilities and strengths of the combined systems to better serve the families of this region. This commitment and this plan are what make this merger our way forward. I say this after carefully considering the impact of the proposed merger of these two systems. It's my firm belief this merger is our best option to sustain the quality and availability of comprehensive healthcare services currently available in this region and to avoid the likely economic impact which could result from a loss of local control. A combined system of Mountain States and Wellmont managed by the team of professionals we know, governed by a local board representing and invested in the communities of this region, and operating under the terms of a Certificate of Public Advantage, is our way forward. And as such, I will sincerely appreciate your favorable consideration of our plan and our commitment to address the healthcare challenges of this region with a local solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a hard time saying that one, didn't you?
Took me just a second.
It's okay. It's spelled... My name is John Speroopoulos, and it's spelled S P E R O P U L O S. So, you're fine. I live in Johnson City with my wife and two kids. I'm a development partner with Mitch Cox Companies, and have done that for many years within our region. Over the years, I've volunteered with many not-for-profit organizations as well as ministries that serve kids here in the community. Today, I'm only going to highlight the fact that I've served on the Finance Committee for Mountain States for many years, as well as served as a trustee and past chairman of Mountain States Foundation. Due to the pressures of healthcare and slowed population growth in our area, I believe our healthcare systems are facing a period of change. It's important to me that our region's healthcare systems remain not-for-profit organizations and that they're governed locally and dedicated to improving our community's health, rather than making them accountable to the balance sheet of a company based somewhere else. I want to see our healthcare governance remain local, and this merger allows for that. I'm also hopeful that this merger can be an important first step towards regional cooperation and unification to address an issue that affects us all, our region's healthcare crisis and its serious issues, which are becoming expensive for all of us. For my family, for my friends, who are experiencing healthcare costs that are becoming challenging, I sincerely believe that this merger with the proposed caps that have been outlined will benefit my family and my friends. But a different tact I want to take tonight. As a developer and an economic recruiter for our region, I often go out and promote our various industries around the country. Often, I experience a barrier to industries and retailers wanting to have presence here because they see us as...
I think you were taking a different tact.
Thank you, I'll start there. Yeah, for that different tack, as a developer and an economic recruiter for our region, I often go out and promote our region to various industries and retailers to go around the country to try to get them to come here. Often, one of the barriers that I experience is that retailers, really, they don't see us as one great viable entity. They see us as three or four separate cities that are smaller, and they don't really have a great demographic, economic impact to get on their radar, and so they don't want to come here. I sincerely believe that with this merger, it can be one of the first steps to promote regional cooperation so that we'll begin to get on the radar of some industries and some retailers and other businesses that I'd like to see in this market. If we operate as one region from a healthcare perspective, we can put ourselves on the map to compete nationwide, and it's that competition that can bring research dollars and help our hospitals to recruit some of the nation's very best talent. And if we, as a region, can cooperate on healthcare, then hopefully, we can find that there's other areas where we can work together as well. To put it another way, and the last thing I'll say, the founder of our company, Mitch Cox, has often characterized our region as individual cities that are kind of like shooting BBs towards each other and around the country to get attention. But if we come together as a region and this merger facilitates that cooperation, then with a unified approach and message, we can start making an impact that'll be more like shooting cannonballs to showcase our effectiveness as a viable economic region to locate a business. We need this merger for more than one reason, and I urge you to support it. Please, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Dr. Scott.
Good evening. My name is Scott Dulaubon, D as in David, U L E, B as in boy, O H N, as in Nancy. I'm a neurosurgeon. I've been working for Mountain States and the VA for almost 11 years since I moved here to Johnson City at that time. I am, you know, torn about the fact that we won't have as much competition, and from a neurosurgery standpoint, one group can go to another place and fight the other and try to get more funding, as we all are avarice, and neurosurgeons especially. But there is no question in my mind, the factor that we're paid in this region by Medicare is so low. We are the lowest factor of any hospital system in the country. That income isn't coming in, and all of the insurance companies, be it the AmeriGroup or, you know, some factor based on that, the funding isn't there. The fact that the hospital system is willing to commit to, as a joined unit, build more universal programs. If we look at the children's hospital, as a neurosurgeon who likes to take care of children, it's hard to buy an endocrinologist in Johnson City and an endocrinologist in pediatrics in Bristol and Kingsport and working to... And, working together with the university and helping fund these physicians together, we can really build better programs. No one wants to be an N of 1, and we’ve had, in these 11 years, six pediatric neurologists come and go because they can’t afford, as a single, fighting one system against the other, to hire two. And no one can be on call all of the time. Dr. Dreisner, I’m certain is familiar with call and the lifestyle that that makes. And so, from a standpoint of being able to develop programs that are across the system, I look at a robot that we want, it’s a million dollars. The idea that we’re going to spend a million dollars here, and then if I want to do the work at Holston Valley, they’re going to have to spend a million dollars on that robot. There are consolidations of services of physicians that really can occur better as a merged system. There isn’t enough margin for the systems to really be doing what they’ve been doing. Yes, they can get a CON because they can say, “In our county, we don’t have enough of X,” you know, and so the CON— but it doesn’t look at it as a practical service line, how we’re providing care to patients. And that’s really what it’s all about, is how we can help people in general. You know, the child health initiatives, the, you know, plans for, you know, the drug and the mental health, I mean, this is a region that is really suffering, and unfortunately, we can look at the FTC and say, “Oh, great, we need more competition.” The problem is, we can’t afford to stay the way we are and be locally managed. I really can’t emphasize enough how important it is that we are a merged group and help bring the three organizations together, the university and Wellmott and the medical center, in terms of bringing better faculty and so forth to the region and our patients. Thank you so much for supporting our plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the doctor was our last scheduled speaker. If there’s anyone who would like to speak and wants to, please come on up.
My name is Bill Green, G-R-E-E-N-E, and I feel like this is our 25th reunion. It seems like it’s been that long. We started this three years ago. We spent millions and millions and millions of dollars. And it’s been interesting for me, having lived here 80 years, and why we started this project in the first place. And if you listen to the people that have come before me, and you notice I didn’t bring any notes, because I’ve been talking about this, Jeff, for three years, as you know, you’ve got a good picture of why our region wants these hospitals together. John mentioned it. We’re in Johnson Speroopolis, we’re in competition with the world. We spent the last 75 to 100 years playing Friday night football up here, between Johnson City, Bristol, Kingsport. And as you all know, working in Nashville, nearly 90% of all industry that comes to Tennessee comes from the governor’s office, comes from your counterpart, economic development. And I’ve worked on economic development here since 1960 with Frank Clement. And invariably, what he says to me when I was with Governor Clement and has said since then is, every time we get a prospect in Nashville and you want someone to look at you in east Tennessee, we have to go to seven different economic development people from each political subdivision that has their own little McDonald’s on the corner. What we’re trying to do is pretty obvious. We’re trying to grow up. We’re trying to become who we can become and who we should become. We’re trying to keep our people here so we don’t send them to Nashville and their parents have to get a motel room because they’re going down to visit Tommy Frist. We’re trying to do what the rest of Tennessee has done so that we can become a major part of Tennessee. I started this program three years ago with four objectives. They’re very simple, they haven’t changed. The first one is improved quality of health. The second is cost containment. Now, the third is economic development. It’s the most powerful economic engine we will ever have in this area. And the fourth one is governance. We know more about what we’re doing up here than some PhD economists from Washington, DC. Thank you, Dr. Dreisner. I hope when you retire, you’ll come back home. We’d love to have you here. Thank you for all you guys have done. I know how diligent you’ve been. I’ve been before you over and over and over, and it’s time we move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dreisner, and panel for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Be sure to state your name and spell it, please.
Sure. Dan Polgiers, P-A-Z-N-Paul, O-H-L-G-E-E-R-S. I am an independent medical practice consultant. I have about 12 contracts up here in northeast Tennessee, but I want to stress the importance of that I am not here representing any of those clients of mine. I am here representing myself as a consumer of healthcare in the tri-cities area. Over the last two years, it was April 2, 2015, that the hospitals announced publicly that they intended to merge. One thing’s for certain, everyone in this room has a vested interest in this process. And I’m sure my friends and colleagues in the area may not like what I have to say, but I assure you that I think that what I’m going to say is in the best interest of the community, and I believe that they have the best interest in the community and their statements. But the one thing that—the couple of things that I remember most about that April 2, 2015 day, and then also the September 5 of 2015, when they sent the letter of intent, was that the community was told that there were several things that were going to happen. That the merger was necessary for the financial viability of the two entities, that the merger was necessary to maintain local control, that competition in healthcare marketplace is not necessary, that consolidation would decrease costs by eliminating duplication of services, that quality and innovation would be enhanced by contracting and investment, that collaboration on public health issues was only possible if the merger occurred. The letter intent was filed just after the end of the 2015 fiscal year for both hospital systems. In that year, 2014 to 2015, Mountain States Health Alliance posted a 221% increase in their net operating expense. They actually posted a little over $1 billion—with a B—in total revenue, while Wellmott posted a reported $694.1 million. Employment and access to care have been at the forefront of a local control argument. However, the systems only make limited commitments to maintain their existing facilities after the merger. It has implied that the current hospital systems will continue to be healthcare clinics and entities, but there is no guarantee that they will continue to operate at current service levels. Ballot admits that there will be consolidation in facilities and job losses. It is impossible to speculate, but it is possible—that the greater negative effect and impact on access to care and employment may be the merger and not another entity coming in and competing with these two entities. In closing, I do have a written statement, but I also want to say that both hospital systems currently collaborate with other healthcare entities. ETSU and Frontier Health both collaborate with Mountain States. It’s been stated here tonight. But also, I want to mention something else that’s happening in other parts of the country. In November of 2016, long-term rivals Carolina Healthcare, which is not-for-profit, and Novant Health Systems launched a partnership to improve the health of Charlotte’s communities whose population health status is significantly challenged.
Thank you, Mr. Polgiers.
Thank you very much.
Well, good afternoon. I’m Gary Mabrey, M-A-B-R-E-Y, President, CEO of the Johnson City-Jonesboro Chamber of Commerce, apologizing for not being here to sign in. I have literally been on the road from Nashville, had to stop and pay my respects at a family celebration of life. Which leads me to these very few comments. This isn’t my first time addressing you. I’m so glad to see you again, and Jeff, good to have you back. Our chambers have been supportive of this from the very beginning. We sent you a letter early on, we resubmitted a letter. You were very gracious to come to our respective offices, and while I’m not speaking for my two collegial chambers, I guess from a standpoint of a regional chamber, we can say that we haven’t changed our mind. That’s why my comments are going to be very brief. You will make a milestone decision. You will position this region, this macro-region, to be worldly and globally competitive. You will allow our university and our health professionals to do their jobs even more, and our citizens will achieve and receive not only quality healthcare, but preventative healthcare. Certainly encourage you to do it. Our chambers haven’t changed our mind. The 1,000 members and 40-some thousand employees of the Johnson City Chamber continue to support it. Ask your support and approval of the COPA, and thank you, and see you soon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Yes, sir.
My name’s Alan Hardison. I live in Johnson City. I’m disabled, I’m on Medicare, Medicaid, and I’m here about a couple of things. Prior to building Franklin Woods, Mountain States promised that at the—when they were going to consolidate Northside, the specialty hospital, and Quill and Rehab, which—that didn’t happen—I don’t know why. It’s leased out now, that’s probably okay, but it didn’t seem like they stuck to the game plan. And then they flattened Northside. I went to the grand opening of Northside in the mid-'70s. To what extent it needed repairs or deteriorated, it’s because they let it go that way. They’re running out of office space all over the area. It seemed like when Bristol built their beautiful hospital with the big lobby atrium, they felt upstaged and were more concerned about that, and then they even, in the little lobby on the original front, I mean, they added a big new one on the mountainside in Johnson City, but then they put in what Jed Clampett would say was a leaky wall. They eventually gave up maintaining that, you know, water trickling down stone. It seems like they’re more concerned about stuff like that. You know, waste not whatnot, it just seems like I see a lot of waste that’s ridiculous. Now, I’m dealing currently with my insurance with a monopoly on one medical specialty in the tri-cities. There’s one urological group for the whole tri-cities. Now that they bought out or put out of business their competitors, people from Marion to Mountain City have to go to Greenville because they say they don’t want to deal with the United Healthcare or Blue Cross Plan. Now, I switched from one to the other because I’d already had to change dermatologists twice in a year. You know, they’re shuffling me around, but I couldn’t deal with United anymore. 16 pieces of mail in my mailbox in a day, but—so anyhow, I ended up back in the same boat, urologically speaking, with the Blue Cross Plan. Up until this point, I didn’t understand there’s a different plan for retired people and different for disabled people. But—so, did I say I’m having to go all the way to Greenville? I had a head injury, and I’m medicated right now for kidney stones. I had two surgeries each of the past two summers, and I have to say, as far as the way I went to Wellmott last summer for the two kidney stones, the way they bill things makes a lot more sense. That’s a story I’ll tell you privately, if you want to hear. They seem to recognize who I am from one person to the—one time to next. But anyhow, so there’s one monopoly in urology. Is that what’s going to become of—in—oh, and it’s not really the primary care, I got the backstory on it. It’s the Medicaid—it doesn’t matter if you’re military tricare, if Medicaid is your secondary co-pay, that’s what they don’t want to deal with. They can’t twist Uncle Sam’s arm for any more money. They got too damn greedy, and that’s what I’m worried will happen, that I’m going to have whatever—or whoever, be in a car accident or kidney stones, go to the hospital and the ER turns you away because you don’t have the right insurance. So, what’s going to keep them from doing the same? I mean, I was trying to be optimistic and ideally think positive, and if it does go through, I hope it works, but right now, I’m really second guessing this, that I have to drive all the way to Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Commissioner, my name’s Ray Heim, H-E-I-M. I’m the trauma program manager at Holston Valley Medical Center. I’m not here to sway you one way or the other, I just want to make sure that you have the correct information that you need from trauma standpoint. Now, number one reason for death for ages 1 to 44 is due to injury. Now, number fifth reason for death for all ages is due to injury. Now, we have three trauma centers that are here in the region. Now, due to the patient load in all three of those, if we had one trauma center, we actually wouldn’t be able to handle the patient load here because none of the hospitals have the structure, because we would have as much patients as what UT Hospital would have. Number one. So, currently, we actually need the three trauma centers that we currently have. Now, if later on, they created one central hospital to take care of those three tertiary care centers, then that would alleviate a lot of the duplication or triplification of services. But that’s something to thank for later on, which would be a long-term goal. My personal thought is, I can see benefits and disadvantages to whether or not you have a merger or not. You know, a lot of nursing staff have actually said, “Well, we’re going to have—we’re not going to have to—we’re going to have to worry about pay and jobs because of it.” Well, my personal thing is, going between both Mountain States and Wellmott, working at both previously, is that pay-wise, it’s about the same. Whereas, they had been looking at both of them and looking for pay-wise between the two, and balancing between the two. Whereas, if they no longer have that and they are unified as one, they’re actually going to have to look outside the area and increase pay, and would actually benefit the staff as a whole, is my thing. But, you know, you’re also going to have to worry about whether or not you can actually get a job in one system. So, thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? No? Want to throw out any closing remarks?
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. I really appreciate the richness and depth of the comments this evening. Sorry about the time limits, and I really appreciate all of you coming here today, and thank you very much for your time and attention.